At the time of the allotted month of November of 2023 to stand up and begin your 2023 Borough Council meeting, month of November, let us please stand and recite our Pledge of Allegiance. We'll follow that with a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, united in all [inaudible 00:01:36].
Thank you. And please be seated. Mr. Secretary Felix, able assistance, we will call the roll.
Mr. Fuentes.
Here.
Mrs. Funk.
Here.
Mrs. Greenholt.
Here.
Mr. Greenholt.
Here.
Mr. Hagberg.
Here.
Mr. Kress.
Here.
Mr. Lookinbill.
Here.
Mr. Rechart.
Present.
Mr. Rowland.
Here.
Dr. Rupp.
Here.
Solicitor Shultis.
Here.
Manager Lewis.
Here.
Mayor Whitman.
Here.
Secretary Felix. Junior Counsel, Taya Persad. Libby Houston.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Solicitor Shultis, would you like to describe our executive session for the record?
Thank you. Borough Council had an executive session tonight prior to the meeting from 6:30 PM to 6:50 PM involving personnel matters, specifically the 2024 administrative salaries under Section 708A, 1 and 5 of the Sunshine Act.
Thank you. Mayor Whitman, you have a proclamation and a presentation or two.
Sure.
The floor is yours.
All right. Mr. Roser would like to come forward. And Chief.
Good evening.
Let's see some of your friends.
Let's see.
So this is Mr. Roser, and he has been in law enforcement for 54 years. So, but he's retiring. And he is retiring at the end of this month. So we are going to present him with a proclamation and appreciation for his many, many years of service and dedication to the borough. So this is for you, and I'm going to read it. John D. Roser. Whereas, John D. Roser served in law enforcement for his entire career of 54 years, beginning with the Federal Bureau of Investigation as a fingerprint technician on June 10th, 1969. Whereas, John accepted a position with the Hanover Borough Police Department on October 27th, 1969, as a dispatcher and auxiliary police officer, earning a wage of $1.80 per hour at the age of 18. And whereas, during his 48 years of employment with the Hanover Borough Police Department, John served as a fingerprint technician, police dispatcher, auxiliary police officer, police officer, detective, and evidence technician. Whereas, John has received numerous letters of recognition and commendations during his career, including a commendation in 1986 where his actions saved the life of a stabbing victim he located under a parked truck while on patrol on December 30th, 1985. And whereas, John has served the Hanover and Greater Hanover Area communities for over two-thirds of his life and will retire as of November 30th, 2023. We weren't believing him there for a while, but I think it's going to happen, knowing that he served his community and his fellow officers with dedication, honor, and respect. Whereas, during his life, John has always been a dedicated husband, father, grandfather, friend, mentor, role model, law enforcement professional, and the list goes on and on. Now therefore, I, Sue Ann Whitman, Mayor of the Borough of Hanover, York County, Pennsylvania, present this certificate of community recognition to John D. Roser and thank him on behalf of the Hanover Borough Council for his many years of continuing service and dedication to the Hanover community and charge all citizens to wish him many years of good health and well-deserved relaxation. Congratulations and thank you.
John, you've always been very stoic and trustworthy, and a little emotion tonight after 54 years is understandable. I'm going to save a lot of what I had because a lot of what I've researched and prepped was in the proclamation. But John, especially to me, a mentor, especially for me, a father figure coming up through the department. I have known John since probably the age of eight or nine. My father was on the force, and so myself and my brother were terrors of West Hammer Street Playground. So, you know, we got to know some of the officers, and Mr. Roser is one of them. And, you know, you know if you messed up, Dad was going to find out as well. So it was kind of a neat thing to grow up knowing John, getting hired on the force, and him being my mentor, now being his boss. A lot of good times, a lot of stories. And I want to thank you for that mentorship, the friendship, the fathership, like figure. And on behalf of the department, members past and present here and not with us, you know, I've heard from an officer or two that you really wished you wouldn't have turned this in when you retired. It's the only one I know of, and I found it in our quartermaster room. This is John Roser's Class 8 blouse from the late 60s, early 70s. This is his actual blouse from the department. John, we appreciate everything you've done for the department. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know it's a busy night.
It's okay. He deserves some time.
But, you know, behind every good police officer is a damn good wife, spouse. So I also have a commendation for Mrs. Roser, Peggy, from the Police Department. Peggy, hereby commended for your sacrifice to support the Hanover Borough Police Department. In August 1971, you married John D. Roser, who at the time was working for the Hanover Borough Police Department, and became a police officer to the department in 1972. I'm sure at the time you had little idea of the ride you're about to encounter, or how long the ride would last. For 15, 16 years, you've endured John working shift work, being called away from home on his time off, having to reschedule or miss family events with John, raise Lori and Chad at times without his assistance, and countless other sacrifices a police spouse makes. You patiently waited by John's side for his retirement from police work, and it is finally here. Peggy, on behalf of the officers and employees of the past and present of the Hanover Borough Police Department, I want to thank you for sharing John with us. Please note your selflessness, and John's time were not wasted. As the citizens of Hanover, it's better for him being part of our organization. It's been an honor to serve with John and to know both of you. We wish you all the best in retirement.
Does anybody back here want to have anything to say?
That's really nice.
All right. Yeah, go ahead. You have the floor now.
I just want to thank the chief, lieutenant, and Potter's back there, and Madam Mayor, and President Council. I've seen a lot of changes in Hanover Borough, the administration in these 50-some years, partly for the good. So I just want to thank you.
All right. Next up, the fire guys want to come up? We have representatives from the Fire Museum. We have Gordy Littis, Gary Rickrodt, and Jim Roth. Roth?
Richard.
Okay. And tonight, we are presenting this framed proclamation in honor of Chris Lockard. And if you all want to, someone want to hang on to that, I will reread it. Because it tells more about what Chris Lockard has done for the community of Hanover. Chris joined the Eagle Fire Company in August 1983 and was very active in the company throughout the years, taking a special interest in the administrative side of operations, including Volunteer Relief Association. Whereas, when Hanover Borough and Penn Township formed the Hanover Area Fire and Rescue Commission in December 2016, Chris served on the commission from the very beginning as a Borough Council representative and also held offices under the Hanover Area Volunteer Fire and Rescue Division. Whereas, in January 2018, Chris was elected to serve as Fifth Ward Hanover Borough Councilperson, where he continues to serve, always taking pride, well, he was alive at the time we wrote this, so where he continued to serve, always taking pride in his community and civic duty. And whereas, Chris led the fight to obtain the Old Eagle Fire Station for use as the Greater Hanover Area Fire Museum with the official grand opening held in September of 2018, and held the positions of president, vice president, and secretary at various times throughout the years. Whereas, Chris took it upon himself to purchase all the paint for the inside of the museum, dedicate many hours to the painting and organization of displays, and was highly honored when the parlor of the Fire Museum was recently named after him by his peers. Now therefore, Sue Ann Whitman, Mayor of the Borough of Hanover, York County, Pennsylvania, present this certificate of community recognition to Christopher E. Lockard and thank him on behalf of the Hanover Borough Council for his many years of continuing service and dedication to the Borough of Hanover and the Fire Department. And this will be hung in the Fire Museum in his honor.
In the locker.
Yeah, that's why we saved that. We thank Barbara. She took it upon to get that beautifully framed. But it was on behalf of all the council members, have contributed to, as a token of our appreciation to Chris Lockard and all his years of service.
If you want to come see Choo Choo trained, the training garden opens up on Friday.
All right. Very good. All right.
How you holding up, Mayor?
Marathon night.
Like the home run derby contest, someone's going to give her a Gatorade.
All right. I mean, space here. You said Exchange Club's on top. All right. So every year, the Hanover, well, now the Hanover Area Exchange Club takes on doing the Chili Cook-Off. And one of the great things about the Chili Cook-Off that I particularly love is all the proceeds, they give out to local charities. And I love the fact that it stays local. So the first one is going to go to the Exchange Club. I want to appear, Brenda.
Can I invite all of us?
Sure. And we're so grateful to the fact that they took it over because Chili John, who originated the cook-off, decided to move to Colorado. And if they had not taken this on, it would have just gone by the wayside. And the very first year they did it, they took it up, it was very little time to put it together. Let me tell you, it's quite the undertaking. You don't know that when you show up that day, because it just looks like, you know, that it's many, many months of planning and lots of people. And, well, you know, because you did it.
It was fun, though. It was a lot of fun. There's going to be surprises this year. So come out and support us.
That's what it's great, too, because every year you take it, you look at it, what went well, what didn't, and they keep taking it and improving it and improving it. And we appreciate that you've done that. And this is a check for $7,000 for the Exchange Club.
Thank you.
Okay. Now the check's on the back here. Now, I want you to stay up. You're going to be my assistant for the rest.
Oh, okay.
So.
It's been good. I would like to also let everyone know that we just joined the Exchange Club, me and my husband, about two years ago. And this Exchange Club is a great, great organization. And I'm not lying to you when I say 98% of the money that we get, including this here, goes back into the community. So I just think that's awesome.
If it's a great community service organization to join, I highly recommend the Exchange Club.
Thank you.
Yeah. You're going to be my, you're going to be my assistant. Okay, next up, we have the Guthrie Memorial Library.
I really should have just said you. You're really responsible for this.
So, anyway, so the Guthrie Memorial Library is receiving a check for $7,000 from the Exchange.
Thank you.
So Friends of Cudores, you are receiving $3,000. And next up, VFW Post 2506.
Bob.
Bob.
We're going to see him twice. Oh, Bob, stay here.
And then for Veterans Matter, $2,000.
Just in case nobody knows what Veterans Matter is, all that money, that $2,000 that is given right here, Bob runs part of that for the Exchange Club, and all that money goes to house veterans. So thank you, Bob, for stepping up and doing that.
Well.
We have Hanover Area Fire and Rescue. I feel like I'm giving out money. All right. Next, Boy Scout Troop Number 107. Thank you.
Black Rose Rollers.
And many of these people that are getting checks tonight, they're not just getting the check, but they also contributed and volunteered the day of.
They did. They contributed greatly, yes. Like, I know you all were pouring some beers that day, right?
Yes. So Black Rose Rollers, $1,000. They're all on the back row. Young Marines. You guys can all come up.
There at least one of them.
You guys all want to come up?
You all deserve it.
$1,500 for the young Marines. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much.
You have to explain this.
Sam Noah has to explain.
Okay. Sam, this is for SJC All-Star. And then, Hanover Area Council of Churches. And then, last but not least, we have New Hope Ministries, and they are receiving $1,000. And that was a grand total of $28,000. And our Borough Secretary, Dory Felix, has been, gives them a lot of help and guidance. Yes.
The mayor will be back later. She's taking a much-needed rest now. Thank you, Mayor Whitman. At this time, we will move into the first public comment portion of the meeting. I have, it looks like five. The first is Audrey Coppersmith. Front and center, Audrey, you know the drill.
Good evening and happy early Thanksgiving to everyone. Once we're finished this meeting, then everybody can start to finally enjoy their holiday. Anyhow, tonight I have a couple questions with regards to how the salaries are determined and the qualifications with regards to hiring, especially as we approach the budget with all the deficits and so forth, and the long-term expenses that the borough has and what the priorities are. I'm concerned that as a Hanover Borough resident, it seems that we're doing quite a bit of hiring, and we're not quite sure how these qualifications and criteria are determined. And most of the expenses are going to fall back on the citizens of the borough. And it would be very helpful if that information could be shared with the public as to how these jobs are determined, the necessity as well as the priorities for them. Second would be having to do with public works and water. Let's see, the cost that's involved for looking at the 139 North Street as well as the 228 High Street. I know they've purchased, or the purchase has been made, I believe, of the 33 Frederick and the reorganization for those buildings to get some of the facilities from this building over to that building across the street, as well as to renovate this one. But I'm just wondering, what is the cost that is involved for those professional service contracts with Buckheart Horn Architects? And what's actually being proposed at that time? In addition, I see that CT5 has been extended yet again as far as for the council to act, I guess, the Planning Commission first, once the plans are finally developed or revised. As I spoke last week, we had a Planning Commission meeting at the beginning of November. There was 23 of us that were here to actually participate in that process, and we were not given that opportunity. In fact, the people from the developer, in fact, really didn't have a presentation. I guess, coming from a retired school teacher and a certified administrator, if I was to do that or evaluate a teacher, they would get a failing grade as far as any kind of presentation. And then the disrespect to the public that was here in order to participate in the process. So I would remind, and I guess, request of the borough to take careful consideration as to how many extensions we grant. I know there's a legal process that's involved, but it just seems like this process is never-ending. And after a while, it just kind of falls by the wayside, and people don't want to be participating or involved too much more because they feel like it doesn't make a difference. So that's my big concerns. And obviously, we still have many issues to deal with in CT4, but that's a whole separate issue. So anyhow, thank you for your time. Like I said, happy Thanksgiving, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Art Becker.
Good evening, Art Becker, 529 Parlow Street, Hanover. As you know, I represent numerous landlords and tenants in the borough. Just to give you some context to the discussion tonight, on November 22nd, 2022, Councilman Hagberg made a motion that council adopt a rental unit registration and inspection ordinance. Not one other council member seconded this motion, not Ms. Rupp, not Mr. Rechart, even though the three of you have been pushing this issue since that time. Now, fast forward 15 to 20 minutes, 20 meetings later, and I'll include safety committee meetings and finance committee meetings, I've been to at least 20 meetings in the last year, on October 25th, 2023, Borough Council rejected a request to hire an outside company and pay them $9,000 to do a survey. So the ordinance and the request for the survey failed. Council didn't want it. And except for a handful of tenants that have showed up and voiced support for this, the people don't want it. So why is this issue back on the agenda tonight? I think because Ms. Rupp, Mr. Hagberg, Mr. Rechart are making a last-ditch effort to save an ordinance that no one wants. They brought in Mr. Miller, Lieutenant Bunty, Chief Klausert, all key stakeholders. And we had a chance to hear from them at the Finance Committee meeting and the Safety Committee meeting in the last few weeks. These are individuals, by the way, that I requested be present a year ago and participate in the conversations, and was told they are not permitted to do that. Well, what did we find out? Mr. Miller, Lieutenant Bunty, Chief Klausert, they know where the problem properties are. They know the tenants that live in these problem properties. They showed us pictures of code violations. They told us stories of how bad the properties are, and they're willing to work with Mr. Miller to enforce the existing ordinance against the slumlords. And they're our slumlords. They're a problem properties. And tenants right now can ask the Fire Department to do a health and safety wellness check free of charge. They don't have, even have to have a reason. How many of the tenants that come to these meetings periodically and voice support for this ordinance have taken advantage of getting a free inspection, a free health and safety inspection from the Fire Department? Well, so far as we know, none. We don't need a new ordinance to do any of these things. And by the way, Mr. Hagberg's ordinance didn't tell us who's going to do these inspections. You'd need a platoon of people to inspect 3,000 properties. How much the inspections will cost? Now we're hearing landlords say they're going to include a Rupp inspection fee in honor of Dr. Rupp and charge an additional $100 a year, either in terms of a single charge or add it to the yearly rent, to cover the time they have to coordinate these inspections. You have 3,000 rental properties, and everybody, all the tenants have to pay an extra $100 a year. It's $300,000. Landlords aren't going to incur the cost to do this. They're going to pass it on to the tenants. Is that fair? No, it's not fair. What are the penalties to landlords for noncompliance? What are the penalties to tenants? Who's going to enforce the code violations? We need another platoon of people to do enforcement. And most importantly, to the people that are sitting back here, how much more in taxes will the borough have to charge the borough residents to pay for this colossal new program you're contemplating? When I asked those questions of Mr. Hagberg last year, he didn't have any answers. He indicated that the ordinance could be amended. And I pointed out that it sounded a lot like Obamacare. You had to pass it to find out what's in it, and we saw how that's worked out for everybody. There's already a dispute about spending $9,000 for this survey. It wasn't authorized by council. It was a Sunshine Act violation, and apparently it was paid for anyway. And now some people want to send this survey back out in the newsletter, which confirms the Sunshine Act violation. We already know that this type of an ordinance hasn't worked in any other municipality. Look at Penn Township, has a 40% to 50% registration rate. Anyone that says this type of an ordinance works in other townships or cities, simply disingenuous. Simply disingenuous. They may have those ordinances, but the problem is the landlords who are slumlords, who are the problem, don't register. Why don't they register? Because they don't want to be inspected. And it's difficult, if not impossible, to enforce ordinances when you're talking about thousands of properties. We have the resources to address these problems. We know the problem properties. There's no reason we cannot enforce our existing ordinances to make our community a better place to live now without spending any more money. I ask that you deny the request to approve a survey for an ordinance that's not defined, not needed, and we cannot afford. Thank you.
Next, we will hear from, check my list, Robert Holt.
I think there's an overarching theme, as I've sit and listened for the last two years since I've moved to this area, and something I think I would ask the council to think long and hard about going forward as you enter into the new year, and that is governance, and consider what is governance and.
Sorry, Mr. Rechart, someone about to come in here.
Yeah, Bob, if you can sit at the microphone, sorry.
To ask you to give a good, long look at governance. And governance is a tough thing. You all have a hard job to do. I'm not sure I could ever do it. You all have a hard job to do, I'm not sure I could ever do it. So I appreciate it. But governance is about fairness, governance is about asking hard questions, and sometimes when there's a judgment call, I expect the council to be making that judgment call, nobody else, the elected officials. And so I really would like you to think long and hard about governance, how you go about things, because it's just led to a lot of questions. We have this question about this landlord, tenant ordinance survey and this $9,000, and I too get the impression the only reason we're doing this survey is the money's already spent, and not everybody on the council agrees with it. And then, I went to the borough's budget session, day-long budget session back in September, and I clearly heard Main Street Hanover asked for an increase of $10,000 from $30,000. And I know I wasn't wrong, and, but then it turns out that they weren't asking for $10,000 increase to 40, they were asking for $10,000 to $50,000. And it's just this confusion, and I think there needs to be some more attention to transparency to maybe go a little bit extra distance here so that the public, your constituents, understand what is at stake in some of these discussions. And it's just a tough job, I understand that. And maybe we need to just go a little bit more on making things a little bit clearer. I'm a little disturbed, distressed to know that I cannot, the budget is not going to be laid open for public inspection until December 1st, but it's already passed. If somebody has an objection, what's going to happen? A legitimate objection, what's going to happen? Nothing, it's a done deal, it's cooked. And so I think there should be, the budget should be laid on the table for public inspection, line by line, whatever they want to see, maybe November 1st. It's these kinds of things. And so I'm asking you all for some governance, do the tough job and ask tough questions sometimes, I know you do already, we maybe need some more and more transparency. And I thank you all, I hope Thanksgiving brings you all many blessings, and I'll not take any more of your time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next, we'll hear from Kelly Horner. If you can give us your address, please, is it 16 Brewster?
Uh huh. My name is Kelly Horner, and I am the Youth Services Manager at the Guthrie Memorial Library. I am a resident of Penn Township, but I'm a borough employee. I wanted to speak to you tonight about a recent day in the library. It was Tuesday, November 7th, on Election Day. I would like to let you know the wonderful things that happened at the library in one day. I will tell you this was an especially busy day, but many days at the library are like this one. I would like you to understand how much the library and its employees are appreciated in our community. I arrived at the library at 8:30 a.m., an hour earlier than my normal 9:30 start. I was preparing for the 9:00 a.m. arrival of Discovery Place Preschool, excuse me, for a library tour. I always start the tour in the lobby to explain the wall that has names of the people and businesses that donated to the library, so that Hanover could have such a wonderful space for its community. I then walk the families through the different parts of the library and explain what takes place each day. We then walk into the original library building, and I ask the children if they noticed the creaky floor when we entered, and they always say yes. We then move through the library until we end up in the children's program room, where I explain the different types of books, how a library works, and read them a story. At 10:00 a.m., the library opened, and we had a special guest for the preschool storytime. The guests were from Dreamrite's Theater in York, they were there to share a story, Charlie Brown Christmas, which is also a play they are performing for the holiday season. One of the guests from Dreamrite's could not get over the fact that Hanover had such a beautiful library. The YWCA preschool class walked over for the storytime, and we had 61 in attendance for this program. While the storytime was happening, my coworker, Robin, was trying to print copies of our annual appeal. She was having trouble with the copier, but eventually got it working so that two of our dedicated volunteers could stuff the envelopes for mailing. During this time, in the Bear Center, the senior program was having a health fair with nine companies represented. There were 50 people in attendance with lots of positive feedback for this program. Around 11:30 a.m., Tara Kaufman, our new fundraising and development manager, asked me to call Michelle Erickson, a parent of our robotics team, to tell her that the library received a grant and we could give them $7,000 for their wish list of items to continue doing the robotics team at Guthrie. They are called the Guthrie Geeks. I called her with the good news and had her crying with tears of joy for this unexpected news. Later that evening, when I went to vote, I spoke with a woman who works with Michelle at Park Hills Elementary, and she told me how happy Michelle was. This was all before 12:00 noon. At 3:00 p.m., the teen library opened. There is a gentleman who volunteers for the library, teaching children chess. He is dedicated to coming every week, and the chess club has been a successful program. Also during this time, some children come to the library after school, and they are always hungry and thirsty. Fortunately, we had someone donate snacks and drinks to the teens, so we had something to give them before they settled in to play with the Playstation 5 and computers. I left the library at 6:00 p.m., but there was still plenty of things happening. The mystery book club was setting up in the children's program room for their monthly book talk. The corner room had a small group doing a Bible study, and the boardroom had a program called Four Truths of Long-Term Care provided by Thrive and Financial. I felt compelled to tell you about this one day in the library because many things happen just like this every day. We all know that in May, you voted to break ties with the library. I don't know, and maybe you don't know, even know what that looks like, but you need to know that the Guthrie Memorial Library is a great place for the Hanover community. We have a dedicated staff and volunteers that provide great services to Hanover. You should be proud of the work your employees do there every day. You should be proud that our forefathers thought enough of this town to have such a gem in the community for generations to enjoy. And you should be proud that people come to the library and appreciate it. You should be proud that the Guthrie Memorial Library is a beautiful representation of your town. Thank you, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
And lastly, in the room this evening, we have Isaac Riston.
There you are. Howdy. My name is Isaac Riston, that is I-S-A-C-R-I-S-T-O-N. I am a homeowner at 36 West Hanover Street. Today is the one-year anniversary of when Hanover Council tabled the rental registration inspection ordinance, and here we are, tonight, to give the citizens of Hanover the opportunity to have a voice in this discussion. Last week, I asked that you not listen to me, but to our first responders and borough employees. Hanover's Chief Code Enforcement Officer, Chris Miller, Hanover Police Department Lieutenant, Joseph Bunty, and Hanover Area Fire and Rescue Chief, Tony Klauscher, they're all standing up for public safety, which shouldn't be controversial or partisan in Hanover. They are doing their jobs. I now ask you, as our elected officials, to follow through. I was happy to see that seven of the eight council members present last week voted to do the right thing and support the people we entrust with our public safety. Tonight, you have another opportunity to respond to our first responders by sending out their survey. Thank you.
All right, at this, at this time, I will ask the assistance of community media to open us up for any online or telephonic followers this evening.
Those joining us via Zoom are able to unmute themselves and address the council if you wish.
Okay, we will close public comment at this time and move into the printed agenda. Is there a council motion for?
So a motion.
Thank you, for number eight, that being the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Want to oppose?
And that's only for, that is only in regards to K2.
Okay, noted. We'll now move into reports of standing committees, the first being Workshop and Finance. Counselor Rowland?
Yes. First is consideration of a motion to approve ordinance number 2355, levying taxes at a rate of 6.37 mils effective January 1 of 2024.
Second the motion?
Any discussion required? We're going to do a roll call on this one.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Dr. Rupp?
Yes.
Mr. Lookinbill?
Yes.
Mr. Ricard?
Fourth.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Yes.
Mr. Hegberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Funk?
Yes.
Mr. Greenholt?
Yes.
Okay, we have 10 in favor of and zero against.
Motion passes. Counselor Rowland?
Okay. Item two, consideration of a motion to approve ordinance number 2356, amending the water rates for properties within the boundaries of Borough of Hanover, effective January 1 of 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the consideration, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
No.
One? Any other, any other opposed, counsel?
I will join Chuck on that one.
We now have two opposed. Any more? The motion carries. Counselor Rowland, back to you.
We need a roll call.
Oh, sorry, we needed a roll call on that, my bad. Okay, let's do it by roll call.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Dr. Rupp?
Yes.
Mr. Lookinbill?
Yes.
Mr. Ricard?
Fourth.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Yes.
Mr. Hegberg?
No.
Mrs. Funk?
No.
Mr. Greenholt?
Yes.
Okay, we have eight in favor of and two against, so the motion passes.
Thank you. Counselor Rowland, back to you.
Item three, consideration of a motion to approve the advertisement of the 2024 Hanover Borough Budget for Public Inspection from December 1, 2023, through December 8 of 2023.
Second.
Discussion required. All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Counselor Rowland?
Item four, consideration of a motion to approve the advertisement of an ordinance for the annual allocation to Main Street Hanover in the amount of $40,000.
So a motion.
Key word being advertisement, which we discussed at length last week. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a nay? Motion carries.
Thank you, President Ricard.
Thank you, Vice President Rowland. Let's move into public safety. Dr. Rupp?
Thank you. I would ask for consideration of a motion to approve the distribution of the rental registration and inspection survey to the Hanover Borough citizens with no postal mailing costs.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the consideration, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
One, two?
Who was the second person? Okay, thank you.
Rowland, Lookinbill, no one opposed on this side, so it's eight, two?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. What are resources? Counselor Greenholt?
Consideration of a motion to approve resolution number 1387 to accept the rules, regulations, and specifications for the water system owned by the Borough of Hanover.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Counselor Greenholt. Planning Commission, Counselor Hegberg?
Consideration of a motion to approve resolution number 1388 for the approval of the preliminary final subdivision plan for 440 and 442 McKinley Avenue.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the consideration, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a nay? Motion carries.
Consideration of a motion to accept the offer of J.A. Myers Building and Development Royal Building Incorporated to grant the borough an extension of time until March 27, 2024, with the consideration of the approval of the Cherry Tree Preliminary Land Development Plan in accordance with Section 508 of the Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, a nay?
Nay.
Want to oppose, Counselor Funk?
Yes.
Any other opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Counselor Hegberg. I'm going to ask Counselor Greenholt, Stormwater Authority Member Greenholt, to take the lead on the Stormwater Authority.
Consideration of a motion to advertise an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the Borough of Hanover, York County, Pennsylvania, to Approve the Proposed Amendment to the Articles of Incorporation of the Borough of Hanover Stormwater Authority, Enabling the Authority to Also Engage in Certain Biomass Facilities Projects," for consideration at Borough Council's December 27, 2023 meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Calling the question, all in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a nay?
Nay.
One nay?
Abstained.
One abstained?
Brian?
Nay.
So I have a nay from Counselor Fuentes, a nay from Counselor Funk, and an abstention from Counselor Hegberg. Everyone else in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, Counselor Greenholt. Madam Mayor, you're up, have you recovered?
Yes.
Okay.
October 2023, Mayor Highlights. October 7, we celebrate the 90 years of the Hanover Market House. Market Master Curtis and Valerie did an outstanding job organizing this festive event. Thank you to all the vendors that have kept this market flourishing. Senator Phillips Hill, State Rep. Klunk, council members, borough manager, and office ladies came out to support and enjoy the celebration too. October 10, I joined State Rep. Kate Klunk and Penn Township Commissioners Elksness and Brown at the 100th Anniversary Dinner of the St. Joseph's Catholic Church Holy Name Society. I presented a proclamation to honor this organization whose mission is to remain a beacon of light for others through the guidance of the Holy Spirit. October 11, a press conference was held by the district attorney Sunday to announce the arrest of 37 people from a two-year drug investigation. A huge thank you to all involved in this collaborative effort, including Hanover Borough Police, Penn Township Police, Northern Regional Police, the York County Drug Task Force, State Police, and FBI. This investigation removed a tremendous threat to the Hanover area as the drug trade affects all areas of public safety. October 13, the YWCA held the sold-out Emerge Women's Conference. I presented a proclamation for October Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Thank you to the YWCA and Save Home for their diligence and commitment to providing these life-changing and life-changing services, life-saving services. This event is always well-done and formative fun and a day well-spent. October 19, the inaugural York County Trail Town Summit held in New Freedom was a great day of presentations from action teams and partners to bring together folks from across the county between the seven trail towns' communities. Amy Kemp of Cycle Forward shared her knowledge and perspective on our Trail Towns program as well. Later that evening, the Fire Commission honored Hanover citizen Bill Myers for his heroic actions in saving life and property. He was passing by a property when he saw flames. He jumped out of his truck and quickly extinguished the flames with a garden hose until fire and rescue arrived. State Rep. Klunk presented him with an accommodation during the Fire Commission meeting. October 21, I attended the rededication ceremony of the Memorial Gardens at the Nice House by Daughters of the American Revolution. The Central York School District Fife and Drum Band performed and gave a very interesting history of the role of the Fife and Drum Players in the regiments during the Revolutionary War. October 28, Sergeant Shannon Brook and I spoke at the St. Paul's Church Men's Group. I talked about all the current happenings pertaining to the borough, while Sergeant Shannon Brook spoke about mental health and the training and education the police receive to handle these calls in our community. October 29, Borough Manager Lewis, Human Resources Director Amy Hill, and I attended the honors ceremony for Bobby Little and Andy Hoffman's life accomplishments and giving to our community. This tribute was presented by the Honors Committee of the Guthrie This tribute was presented by the Honors Committee of the Guthrie Memorial Library. We thank Bobby and Andy for all their numerous and diverse contributions over the years. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this time, we will open up for any final public comment in the room. Chargers?
I would just like to thank Margie and thank Dory for the hospitality shown, 16, 18 students from the Hannover, I believe is one of them, with 18 kids painting the Winters Downtown, and they got to eat down here because they had nowhere else to go. So they invited them here, they were very kind. And just a reminder, the pre-living ceremony is Saturday, it's not Friday. It's in your thing, it's Fridays. The Santa comes on Friday, and the pre-living ceremony is Saturday night, in case you're all going.
Good catch, right.
And one other thing, too, if anyone wants the thrill of a lifetime, if an opportunity to be a volunteer at the Santa's Cabin, you just can go to a place on Main Street and sign up. It's a wonderful opportunity to interact with children who are all excited outside the cabin door to come and see Santa, then they open the door and they see Santa and they go, oh, and they get all scared. But it's a really nice opportunity to welcome the children, and then you take pictures of Santa, and they need volunteers. So it'd be a fun volunteer flight to our stint, it's really nice. And anybody else in committee, do the same thing. It's really nice, just go sign up, it's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to add, at one point, just to reemphasize, what the police and Dave Sunday's team did with the 37 arrests, because I think that's phenomenal. And jokingly said, we won 40 for next year, but, you know, our support of the police and the DA and the local organizations are what is going to enable us to stop this nightmare. So, thank you very much, Chief Martin.
Anyone else? All right, we're ending in a more positive manner. Community media?
If you're joining us via Zoom, and you'd like to address council, unmute yourself.
No one? Well, with that, it's almost Thanksgiving, but I suppose we should adjourn the meeting first.
Oh, yeah, and during the holiday season, it's free parking at the Winters Downtown. Was that Friday and Saturdays, I believe, all day?
And in front of the mayor's house. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor. Aye, aye, aye.
See you next month.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.